I show 7:00 PM, so let's all rise and open the meeting, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. Welcome to the October 15th, one week delayed meeting because of holiday last weekend, or last week. And I don't know, it seems like the past few Mondays, it's been awfully gray and awfully rainy in our environment. But anyway, we're all here. I think Charlie is traveling this month, so he did indicate he wouldn't make it tonight. And we did have publicly noticed a public hearing, which we'll do first. It has to do with a small piece of our zoning code. We're modifying some wording in the general business district. We had tasked the zoning review committee, who report to the board. And part of the process is, since it's an actual zoning law change, we have to have the public hearing. So that being said, let's formally open it, and we can talk for a few minutes. So I would move that we open the public hearing to deal with the local law and general business district changes. Is there a second?
Aye.
No favor?
Aye.
Aye, good. So in our packets, we have things that include the details. We had circulated the local law, and then the board did ask for some clarification on it. We had the public ways, and we had that modified to the public right of ways. I think that was one question board members brought up. So that was changed timely, and that was circulated to all of you, and it's in the body that we're working on tonight. Part of what we have to do tonight is also, we did work on the EAF portion, and Cindy did send off the notice to the county, and they came back saying it's a matter of local concern. So just so the board knows that part. And then what we would do is talk about the law itself briefly. Essentially, if you look at the text of the local law itself, I'll just give a synopsis to the audience. The purpose of the law is to regulate the development of motor vehicle service stations in the village's general business district, and to amend the existing regulations regarding the use, maintenance, expansion, and discontinuance of non-conforming uses and structures within the village. So essentially, just for public info, and any comment could come back, the village is looking to control what could or could not, could happen with the two gas stations that are in a general business district. The premise being that they're not necessarily the greatest, best use of the village center, and we wouldn't want them expanding or taking down adjoining buildings or doing anything to become more of a rest stop for traffic than a retail and vibrant center of the village. Ironically, today, one of our residents brought in, I don't know if you guys can see, but there's a sketch in front of Jen somewhere over here. It's what used to be at that corner, is the old Red Hook Hotel. And I think the person was doing the downsizing folks do in their seventies and so forth, and they wanted to move it. So he gave it to us contingent on that, we respect it and take good care of it. And another home for it could be the historic Red Hook people, but it is, it was kind of interesting timing that it came into us today. So, but that's the overview in a nutshell. I think the regular attendees have been aware of what we're working on here. And a couple of questions the board had, I think I addressed there with the change in text on that one piece of the wording. And so we'd open up to any public comment there. Mr. Beekman, I suppose, George, to be right, would you mind coming up? For new attendees, Panda takes our voice from cable, so you have to talk into a mic. He's a regular guy, he kind of knows.
We're on.
Back to his headquarters.
My thing is, I really, to me, it's just another example that the village doesn't want business, to restrict a business of any kind on a whim, because people need gas. You're gonna end up like some other towns where you gotta drive 10 miles to get gas with your mower or something like that, carrying your gas can in the car. I don't know what you think these people are gonna do. How big can they get? You only have so many customers in the village, anyway. I think you're overreacting to it.
I hear you.
And you're not gonna get a hotel in that corner, ever.
Well, I think, just so the public's clear, whoever's watching this on television, we're not saying they go away. We're saying that they can't expand, they can do maintenance, they can do, they can continue where they are and what they are. But we're not looking for a major change if they were to buy adjoining properties and demolish and things like that. That's one of the things we're looking to prohibit.
Well, I'm opposed to it.
Good. And I would take umbrage, I would say, everything we've done is to promote business, but there's also, what I would say is a quality of business. Having vehicles turning through your main four corners to curb, through curb cuts and through the heart of your village is a little bit difficult to deal with. So we just want, we wouldn't, I wouldn't want to get it bigger, getting any bigger. So that's...
If it got bigger, they'd be set back further, and you'd have almost like a park-like atmosphere.
No, we looked at that, and if you look at the code...
It just looked like a bigger gas station.
Pardon me?
It just looked like a bigger gas station.
Yeah. But, um...
Do you have a question, Don?
Yeah, you're talking about Lottie Kittner? What, she wanted to sell that property, and then the mobile station could move back further?
We're just talking about a zoning change. We're talking about other people.
I like George says, "I'm opposed to it, too."
Okay. Any sales from the board?
No, sir.
Okay. That being said, we had two comments. We had George Beekman and Don Finn, who we know, so can you include those? And I would move that we close the public hearing.
Second.
Oh, hold it. I see an audience member raising their hand.
I have a separate issue. In fact, you called me, you left me a message.
Yeah, I figured that's you. Let us do this, and I'll, we'll get to you next, we'll... So we had a motion to close the public hearing, a second, all favor?
Aye.
Okay, good. And Mr. Tierz, I guess that's you, right? What we had was a previously scheduled formal public hearing. We have to do for something, we're doing with zoning laws. What we generally do for the board, we did circulate, Charlie lives in Red Hook Estates, and he has sent a letter with some signed petition holders, looking to modify yield and stop sign configurations at Kent and Amherst.
Kent, yes.
But what I could do, usually when we have a new attendee with a particular issue, we would, if the board so concurs, we would go to you next. We have a normally an agenda, but unless you want to stay, we could go like an hour forty-five or two, you might not want to stay the whole time. I could say a few things, and then you could jump in, too, but we did get a letter, and I think there was probably twenty petition signers requesting what it is, just so this board can know a little bit more about it.
I brought a copy of a written reason, maybe even a change.
Yeah, I could, I wanted to paint a little visual picture. It's within Red Hook Estates, where Amherst wanders in in a U shape, almost meets Kent, and I think it's at that corner. I could try to call something up here. Would you like to see something?
Yeah, I'm not, I think I know where to... Is it, is there a yield sign there presently?
Two yield signs, one stop sign.
Okay. I think I know what you're talking about.
That's the question's a problem.
Okay.
Sorry. Sure. Can we call you Charlie? I mean, see my Charlie? Is it right here, is what I envisioned? Is it?
It's a bit of eye angle.
Okay.
Uh, yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
There's a yield sign here, there is a yield sign here, but there's a stop sign there.
Could you point?
The issue is that traffic that comes this way...
Let me just...
Okay, yes. This comes in from the deli, straight off the nine. It's a direct shot to go back to Cambridge in that way. In the evening, what we get is almost the reverse. When traffic backs up from the theater, everybody comes in, shoots down at Farm Road, Cambridge, and goes out this way to go back to nine. This is also a cut through for any construction on nine or an accident, whatever, they shoot everybody through here. I live right there. I'm a firsthand witness to the traffic flow. When they come through here, there's a hedge line along here, which basically blocks the yield sign there. The yield sign here is set back far enough, you can't see anybody there, and people just come through here, it's like an S curve. They come through here without hesitation, blow through here, and come down this way. It's the same way going around to Kent. They go through this yield sign like it doesn't exist, yet the people coming this way have a stop sign there, which I guess is fine. What I'm looking at, and in talking with the people that live in this area and down this way, many with young kids and family members that walk through there, I'm asking for the yield signs to be replaced by stop signs.
As a three-way stop, is that what you're saying? Okay.
Now, in the letter I sent, I went through, uh, Lincoln Acres, Brammore Estates, Ropie Estates. I could not find one yield sign in any of those developments. So this, if this were changed, it would be consistent with the other developments in the village.
I think they're in the town, those other developments.
Yeah.
Even so, that's my guideline that I'm working with. I canvassed people with probably 500 feet either side of the intersection. I got 100% support signatures, everybody's asked, please do something. The woman at Lazard crosses the street from me, Ellen Litten, moved in the same time I did. In the first month we're there, we couldn't believe the cars that fly through there. So four years later, here I am, just trying to get something done about it. I think it's a safety hazard. I think I'm surprised by now, somebody hasn't gotten hit, and hopefully no worse. My driveway is right over here. Because of that hedge line and everything, I can't even back into my driveway. Three times in the last two years, I've almost been T-boned backing into my driveway, which comes right onto Kent, because they fly through here. Here's the yield sign, zoom, zoom, through, and you don't stop. Anybody down on the lower part of Kent, the other gentleman who signed it has a Cambridge address. His driveway is also onto Kent, a little further down from mine. That's the same predicament. He backs out, next thing, somebody's on him going to Cambridge. So I think it's a simple fix. You take down the two yield signs, you put up two stop signs. An hour time, I'm sure we got some stop signs someplace around the village. Doesn't involve any cost, labor, half an hour, village crew. I think in the long run, I think we're avoiding a problem. I hate to see a child get hit. They go up the road, they play in the road, they chase a ball into the road, they chase a pet into the road, and with the traffic flowing through there, I just don't want to see it again.
You bring up good points. I think one thing we could clarify, on our agenda tonight, we weren't certain that you were gonna show up, but we do have set a public hearing, like we just had a public hearing now. There's a little bit more to it for us than just putting up stop signs where the yields are. In our code, in different sections of code, it's the embodiment of our vehicle law. So in order for it to be enforceable, the board has to do a local law, insert or change. So it's not as simple as just changing the wording of it.
Yeah, I don't understand the other, just to go with it.
So what we do is, I wanted to set the public hearing, and then we fully believe all the signature, no question on that part. It's just something we have to do on the protocol to make a change. I was kind of surprised, quite frankly, it's sort of a self-contained, whenever I walk back in there, I was thinking, well gee, whoever drives here is kind of lucky. It's mainly people that live there, but you're describing some other flow, which is kind of, I didn't really think of that, but...
Well, I think, I think a lot of it comes from it being a straight shot off the nine. It can be right on the deli, it's only one block down, and you're right there. And a lot of that, and it goes down, disperses into Cambridge, where they've been taking the whole loop all the way around.
Because one thing the board would probably want to think about is, what are the other corners, like, you know, do you know of them?
They all have stop signs.
Yeah, okay, so there's no other yields anywhere in the area?
There's no other yield in the development, and there's no other yield in any of the other developments that I put in my letter. And I'm not looking to throw anybody under, excuse the expression, a bus. Red Hook school buses go straight through these yield signs, without even hesitation.
Yes. But anyway, what we did, Charlie, audience and board, is you can see on our regular business, I put there set public hearing, stop signs at Amherst slash Kent, so...
Yeah, I mean, if you want to do this at another time, that's fine.
Yeah, what we do is, what I'm saying, we would have to, and what we can do is, we have a workshop meeting this Thursday, we can kick it around once or twice, but when we get to our regular session, we'll set the public, the public hearing doesn't predict where we'll end up, but it's the tendency that we're gonna go there for you. But, yeah, but just so you're clear, if you take back to your people in your neighborhood that we just can't go tomorrow with the highway guys and clip on a new color and a red sign instead of a yield sign, so...
So that you just go with it.
Yeah.
Yeah, so then if somebody blows it, we can write them a ticket, you know? That's the other part. Enforcement's always, the signs are good, but we can't really hide anybody there, it's kind of open...
No, I understand, I understand that. I mean, I, in another circumstance, I ended up talking to one of the officers in town, and he said, "Well, you know, that's 30 miles per hour through there." I said, "Yeah, but it's not happening."
No, that's the good part, because Brent will talk about traffic calming more, maybe the way it's laid out, it kind of makes it hard to go 30 through there, but...
No, you can step through there like it's a racecourse.
Really? Yeah, wow.
Curves are challenging, right?
Oh, and kids love it, oh, did they love getting those little Hondas going through there.
Yeah, that's why I think it's probably some teenagers or something. But, but if you're, you're welcome to stay longer, but we'll do...
No, I, I just wanted to come tonight, so I had the opportunity. My time is kind of limited, as I mentioned to you, I work outside the area. I just want, since I sent a letter to the board, I wanted to come to initiate it. I didn't expect any response, or, I mean, I didn't...
No, no, we'll, we'll get, we'll get it.
You got a pretty busy making tonight.
We'll work on getting that turned to regular business, but the reason I brought you up front was keep you from having to stay the whole meeting, since you work out of town and everything, so...
Yeah, I appreciate it.
But you're welcome to sit there, too, but...
Thank you, I, you know, that was good, we got that piece done, so I can be available at another time, just, you know, leave me a message.
Okay, we got your stuff.
Okay.
Okay, thanks, George, okay.
You know, stop signs don't mean much.
Well...
By my corner, at night, when the sun goes down, it doesn't exist.
It's a star.
Well, George, you got the microphone there, but...
You gotta sing.
We're gonna swing back, we did the pledge, so we did the public hearing. Let's move to the formal side more here, minutes. We did circulate September 10, and September 20th, the 10th was the regular monthly board meeting, 20th was a workshop. I've perused, read, reviewed, and I would ask the board if there are any other alterations, additions, or corrections. Hearing none, I move that we accept them as presented here.
Exactly.
All favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Fair with me. If the board wants to look right to the wall, we have an appendage on our AUD graph. While I find the Treasury report here, I know I had it, you know what, Cindy? I was attacking it, and...
Okay.
Thanks. I was looking at it, as always, today we're midway in October, so we're 37.5% through the year, so I was comparing where the budget lines are, and almost all of them seem pretty much on point, doing well. But what's on the wall is, we had a September 30th deadline to get our AUD in, was submitted. It's about, what, 60 pages thick? And that's the general fund balance we're talking about there. And what you can see is, we held it somewhat below flat there. Last year was 382,000 fund balance, now it's 369. But like I've told individual board members, that's deliberate, you'll recall back when we bought the big highway truck and a few things, we deliberately took some money out of fund balance instead of borrowing that much and so forth, so... That to me reflects what our intention was, not to be going up and just having a big fund balance and borrowing money, if it's, I think it's a good result. And it seems like when the controls office does their susceptible to fiscal stress tests, we're still good, when we're around that $300,000 number, we're getting full points for our fund balance there, so that's a good thing. Back to the specifics, though, I'll read it for Cindy. Balance is general fund, 843,904. Water fund, I think you're taking in a boatload of checks right now, right? It's probably the whole...
Water?
Yeah, the fourth quarter coming in. So right now, the fund balance there, Cindy, the account balance is $174,567. Trust and agency, 24,916. Materials management, $2,387. Petty cash, $44.50. Village green, $4,404. Hardscrabble, $3,768. Health insurance is $4,664. Sewer fund, $14,810. Capital project zero, just as an explanation, sewer fund, we moved 20,000 into that to cover some early expenses, and one of them is some filing fees and so forth on the easements and so forth that are coming in, so there's nothing out of the ordinary there, it's just that the county clerk and title agencies and things have worked some deals with us, but it still costs money to file...
That was submitted to the EFC, though, so it will be reimbursed.
Yeah, good point, Cindy. It is considered an admin expense in the project itself, but to get the money to flow quickly enough to get certain easements filed, we have put it up front. As far as the expense side, general fund expenses were 128,309. Water was 62,313. Trust and agency, 24,916. Materials management, 5,164. Cindy and I did talk a little bit in water, there was, we had to pay phase one principal and phase one, one half of interest this month, right? So that's, that's in...
Thirty-three thousand.
The voucher pack, we ran, so of the 62,000, it was 33,000-ish. In materials management, that was two, I think there's two tipping fee charges from Ulster County Resource Recovery and that, so it's, it's not like recycling got that expensive, it's, that's two months worth of drop-offs in there. Like I said, I went through, we're at 37.5% a month, and it's like revenues are doing what we projected, and then expenses, we are seeing, when Jen reports, there's resource recovery slash materials management, is a better word. They had a light month in tag sales, and we can talk about that when that comes up, but I do remember that from another year, too. It's unexplained dip, which we could look at and try to analyze. So those are the numbers, and that's the AUD. Between the two, I would move that we accept the Treasury report, is there a second?
Second.
No favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Let's see, Police report.
Can I have the report back?
Sure.
Thank you.
Stealing it from me. Let's see, this report would be for the month of September 2018, and the gross incident count is 352, breakout is 253 in a village of Red Hook, 96 in the town of Red Hook, three in a village of Tivoli. Tickets involved are 149 total, it was 82 in the village, two of those are parking tickets, 67 in the town of Red Hook. Arrests, 26, breakout is 11 in the village, and 15 in the town. Looks like a fair amount of activity in the town this month of September. And we've been seeing a couple of parking tickets. We periodically get some push from street merchants that want that two-hour enforce pretty hard and so on. Looks like they are writing a few. And that'd be that report.
So does that parking ticket number indicate that there was foot patrol going on?
I'm sorry, Jay couldn't hear the end part.
The, does the parking ticket notice indicate that foot patrol was, like, in progress? I'm just curious, because, you know, to, to carry on, I guess, just not to let Steve's thing, you know, fall by the wayside, are we, you know, still pursuing foot patrol?
I've always assumed that to get a parking ticket...
Foot patrol, I see three.
...patrol and biking.
I think to get a parking ticket, you need to have a foot patrol, because they mark tires, is my understanding, and then they come back and look at what tires were still there from a two-hour gap.
910, 927, 930, three days.
Where are you picking up there, Jay Bird?
Uh, foot patrol, it's on the...
Alphabetical?
Yeah, three days, the 10th, the 27th, and the 30th, just...
Yeah, it looks like, I don't know what days the tickets were written, but... Looks like you found the foot patrol heading. I don't know what else, if other things fall into other categories, or what? Security checks are a big thing, and, yeah, I don't know. That looks like it's mainly one of our vulnerability programs that we have, oh, not security checks.
Oh, I just didn't want it to die on the vine there, since Steve wasn't here to push it, so...
Yeah, okay. All right.
I did see a bike patrol.
Yay!
Yeah.
This month.
Segway.
Segway patrol?
There we go.
All right, I think we did talk, maybe you could stop me, but one of the other headings there is insurance, and I remember talking about with some folks that the county workers' comp is going up in price, and there's, but they're gonna stage it more. Did we talk about that last month or in a workshop? Does it sound familiar?
One of them we did.
Yeah. The, all accounts that are in the county workers' comp program are having their rate and, their cost is being increased, but they have agreed to take it over a couple of years instead of bringing it up suddenly. So I'll have to think about that budget season next, next winter. That, it looks like all of that hitting, Mr. Trustee Trap, are you ready to work on your, your...
Certainly.
Okay.
Yeah, so just for those of you who may or may not be attending tomorrow evening, October 16, annual, it's going to be Duchess County Planning Federation's, the class is Making Your Community More Farm Friendly Through Planning and Zoning. It's six to eight. As typical, we feed you, we give you learning credits, and the special added attraction is tomorrow night, we have our annual business meeting, and now that the village has, has paid their dues, I'll be able to run for president again. Otherwise, I would be, I would be shunned and thrown on the sidewalk, and they'd lock the doors and let me in again, so... But, and we've got, got a full complement, I think tomorrow, we're supposed to have all of our fellows there. Three of us are up for election. Hans, who's on the Duchess County Planning Board, and Phil DeRosa, I think he's a trustee or councilman somewhere, Union Vale or something like that. And we're gonna have a new person, Barbara, let's hear it, Barbara Robert, zoning administrator. We changed our, our regulations to allow zoning administrators and CAC people to actually be on the Planning Federation Board of Directors. Before, it was either planning, zoning, or elected, and so we sort of changed the scope of what we had done at this point, so... Let's see, in the class, it, let's see, Owen Rafter's gonna be speaking, and Shelby Frank from Duchess County Planning... Owen Rafter's gonna be speaking and Shelby Frank from Duchess County Planning. And, uh, let's see, Jennifer Fimble, uh, who's an agricultural navigator. Boy, that's a, that's a new term, not a, not one I'm, I'm.
Oh, that's a boating term.
Anybody know what an agricultural navigator is out there? No, in any of them. So, we have our, uh, our meeting tomorrow night in Millbrook, Route forty-four, Farm and Home Center. And in the planning and zoning world, we had three building permits issued, uh, last month. Uh, no C O's, no C of, one C of C, and that is probably not A's Land Road, that's probably Maisland Road, so we should probably look at that. One municipal search was, uh, conducted. No orders to remedy, no stop work, no court appearances, and fire, fire inspections, um, are on the attached letters, which I don't think there is one this month. So, that answers that. Planning Board met September thirteenth, had two items, assign approval and, uh, extend an approval for a preliminary subdivision plat for Anderson Commons at Fisk and Baxter. Uh, George, you guys had business. How about that? You dusted off the books and everything and went to the gusto?
Second meeting for the year.
Wow.
One next month.
September twenty-seventh, two thousand eighteen, variance application, twenty-three Bird Street, public hearing set for October twenty-five. Good for you guys, got some business. And let's see, I think the election schedule was amended and the total collected last month was five hundred and fifty-six dollars and forty-nine cents. And, uh, Ed and I had a, a good meeting with the, with the fire officials. I think we'll probably get into that a little bit later, so.
Okay, good.
I think that's about it for me, Ed.
Well, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Let's see. Okay, thank you Jay. Maybe I'll do, see if I can make this any bigger. Charlie's away, but this is the monthly water report. This is a, since I have a digital version, I'll put it up on the board. You might have heard him talking, folks in the audience, about, we saw consumption going up. And, uh, these numbers over here, the annual daily flows, they're a little light. But this number here is two hundred and twenty thousand, by my cursor, up above is two hundred and thirty thousand. And now it's dropped back down closer to two hundred thousand. The actual, I'll read it in a minute, is two hundred and one thousand seven hundred gallons per day average. So, just to be formal here, during the month of September, the water treatment facility treated six million fifty-two thousand total gallons, which averages out to two hundred and one thousand seven hundred gallons per day. And we do send off those bacteriological samples each month with certain collection points. And coliform thankfully is absent, as is E coli. And the report summarizes to the amount of sodium hypochlorite, which to the layperson, that's chlorination. Um, average daily use is two gallons per day. So, that's like the day-to-day, the, the, the data numbers we talk about. It does look, we always get concerned when we start to bump up. I know two or three weeks ago, the highway and water folks repaired a leak or a problem over on, um, towards the Blue Echo side of the world and East Market Street there. Um, and then I forget when they exactly did the main repair on Route nine south. But, um, that could be something that brought it back to reality. On the bigger scheme of things, on the back pages, we have well twelve is fully back in service, so all wells are now, uh, operational. There were some transducers that had to be changed on well twelve. And, um, transducers talked to the high-tech systems and help us regulate pumping and flow and so forth. And today, I haven't heard any results, but they were doing a test run of the final decommission of the elevated tower today. Um, but like I said, as of four o'clock, I hadn't heard any results. Had you heard anything Cindy? And then Plant I Q, that's the high-tech communication and, uh, monitoring systems that we have. They're working on a few more tests and then that'll all have to tie in when the elevated tank comes offline. The pumps and all the transferring will happen right in our wellhouse, so the, the computer has to be fully able to talk to every pump and every switch, so they're working on that. Then on Wednesday, I'm gonna meet with, um, Ari, who we put into more of an admin level to help us with some smaller open items in water. So, those are the things, we don't need to see the names there, but it's just meters and different things that are having issues that we have to get corrected. But overall, um, I'm glad to see that curve coming down, but that's the water report. Usually Charlie talks to a little bit about L E D light project, we have that on the regular part of our agenda tonight. We have some project news there, which is good news, but we'll talk about that later. That's the water report, folks. So, looks like, uh, we could head for celebrations, but Jen, let me put something up first, so you have a little.
Celebrations with Jen.
Let's see, see if we can get up here. Make it good for the camera too. If my computer will open it.
But before that, we survived hardscrabble that, hey, we have to say that.
See, that's funny, it's, um, it seems like a long time ago already.
It's like, it's like a month.
September fifteenth, yeah, it was the fifteenth, it was the fifteenth, right? It was the fifteenth, yeah. You go Jen.
Okay, well, we survived hardscrabble day and thank you to all our sponsors who make the day possible. Um, Red Hook Halloween is, uh, Saturday, October twenty-seventh. We will have a chili contest at noon, um, with trick-or-treating, uh, with the local merchants from one to three. Costume parade will be leaving from the municipal parking lot, starting at three o'clock. Uh, thank you to Ulster Savings Bank for sponsoring this event. Uh, we'll also have live music from two to three and pumpkin painting with the Red Hook Public Library. Um, and then if you have more than two feet, you can go to the Dog Halloween, which is Sunday, October twenty-eighth, from eleven to two, uh, which is run by Paws Dog Boutique, uh, in our parking lot and also at their location right on Market Street. Uh, info and adoption fair, trick-or-treating for dogs, and a dog costume parade, which if you haven't seen it, is absolutely hilarious. Um, I forgot to put in the typed, but, uh, just to mention, the Red Hook and the Chocolate Festival, uh, held by the Red Hook Chamber of Commerce will be November third, uh, with vendors, demonstrations, um, and chocolate galore. Uh, and that evening, the Red Hook Community Center will be having their annual gala and fundraiser, that is also November third. Moving on to the fabulous world of materials management, which is becoming more dramatic as the year goes on. Uh, for the month of September, we sold two thousand three hundred and four dollars and fifty cents in garbage tags and paid out one thousand four hundred and three dollars and forty-seven cents. That's a typo. We had nine point three tons of garbage. So, my computer at home, the nine button on my keyboard does not work. I don't know why, but it doesn't work. So, that should be nine point three tons of garbage and four point four tons of single-stream recycling. Uh, reminder, due to global issues, meaning the, you know, the, the grand market and, and China, uh, our local recycling has changed. I'm glad that you have the calendar. This should have come to everybody in their newsletter. We now have to go to a schedule for recycling. Um, in general, cardboard will be on the first pickup of the month. Paper the third Monday of the month, with commingled glass, metal, and plastic on the second and fourth Mondays of the month. This will start on January first. And, yeah, it's a bummer. It's a bummer, I don't know what else to say. Uh, so, there you have it.
Thank you. Yeah, two things, as Jen said, this, what we're holding up is in everybody's water newsletter, so it's easy to view and I think will remind people in the December newsletter. It's really not going live, we're saying January one, but the way the calendar falls this year, Monday is December thirty-first, so that'll be when we truly go live. But that's on the calendar, and I think some of us can remember having this on our refrigerator years ago. Like we said at other meetings, it's nothing we wanna do or intended to do, it's just the world of recycling and the markets have changed. And rather than us spending tons of money per ton to get rid of recycling, this will take it back to a zero cost, so the products are more usable, um, at the recycling centers. So, keep your eye peeled, keep that on your refrigerator, and then we'll, just to be fair, we'll send it again in this, with the December newsletter, just to have it out there again. But, um, we're also attaching on the front, what is a glass and a plastic, what's cardboard, what's mixed paper and garbage, just to get everybody back away. We all got into the single-stream mode, which is great, but now we have to go back to the nineteen nineties or whatever that mode was. Um, but we'll do it, we'll get through it. I think the bigger thing, what I was looking at, um, if you look at Jen's printout or spreadsheet, tags sold were twenty-three hundred and four dollars in September. Doesn't quite make sense, cause the prior month was three thousand and change, then the prior two were four thousand. Um, if you look at the tonnage collected on the spreadsheet, the tonnage is essentially the same, you know, we're picking up the same.
If you look at the year before, it's almost identical that it dipped in September.
It did dip in September, and then I see another dip in March, I remember panicking at the March one last year.
Yeah.
Um, and, but.
Got the tag sale special.
Well, that.
April, May, April, May and June is the tag sale special, so that maybe people in March are like, oh, you do what, I'm gonna wait.
Yeah, but then the flip side, July, it was a heavy month and the sale was off already in August. Um, but what we might have to think about, you know, we'll look, we'll let, um, another month go by and look at the trending there, but, um, if the tonnage stays up, you know, it's not like customers, customers are moving away, it's, um, we have to figure out what, what's, what's going on with the sales there. Um, but we'll keep our eye on that next month and we might have to make some decisions on, you know, cause the price isn't going down, you know, the cost, the tip and the tot, this and that and everything, it's, uh, so it's keep our eye on that. Thank you Jen. Hey, that poster looks good on that background color, isn't it? It's, uh, designed, it's like a design for the wall. George, you gonna come, excuse me, you gonna, you gonna dress up? Yep.
You gonna be a pirate again?
I don't know man, I'm pushing my limits on that one, I don't know. I think the, the wig is like full of moths or something, yeah. Okay, so we did that. Looks like it's time for Deputy Mayor Kovalchak, you ready to work? He didn't bring his reading glasses, so he might be, okay, or what are you gonna do?
Give it a shot here.
If you get in trouble, we'll help you out.
Just wing it, don't worry about it.
I'll start with the Village Green Committee monthly report for September. Current balances of the Village Green Committee's related budget accounts are as follows. Community beautification, we're at four thousand dollars. Shade tree contractual, two thousand three hundred and fifty dollars. We just finished up the season's, uh, tree pruning and tree removal, so we had quite a dip in that balance, but still in the black. Village Green Committee checking account, uh, remains at four thousand four hundred and three dollars and thirty-three cents. Uh, Dave Pearson and myself located potential planting sites and sought approval from adjoining property owners for the upcoming fall planting. We did this on September twenty-ninth. The anticipated date for the fall planting will be within the first two weeks of November. I already put a blast out to our volunteers, um, to save the date of November third or the tenth. And this is all dependent on the, um, the delivery from our nursery. And anyone interested in volunteering to help plant, I did send, um, requests out to, um, Center for Civic Engagement with the Bard students. Um, they've always come forward with some help. But people who are interested can contact Dave Pearson, myself, or leave a message with the village clerk. And the Village of Red Hook Highway Department monthly report, the village highway department is still picking up lawn debris and brush. Every first and third Monday, weather permitting and schedule permitting, and residents are reminded to place lawn debris on curbside and place brush, lawn debris, and grass clippings in separate piles. And please limit the size of piles to six feet by six feet by six feet, with tree limbs and branches no larger than six inches in diameter. Um, leaf pickup will begin in the fall.
Can you be more specific?
I would think. Weather permitting, and please place leaves in, in a row, in a, in a row, curbside, not in a big pile. And do not include brush or lawn debris with the leaves, and burning of the leaves is not permitted within the Village of Red Hook. Uh, revenue from the sale of scrap metals was received on September seventeenth in the amount of four hundred and eighteen dollars. Total revenue generated for this fiscal year is one thousand sixty-nine dollars. Since inception of the scrap metal recycling program in September of two thousand seven, twenty-seven thousand sixty-seven dollars and seventeen cents has been generated. And we use this money to purchase tools and equipment for the Highway, Water, and Material Management's Department. And anyone interested can contact the Highway Department at seven five eight eight six hundred or the village clerk's office. And we will assist by picking up scrap metal upon request. The Task Force in the Red Hook Infrastructure Monthly Report, I'll start with the sewer project. Meetings were held on September seventh, fourteenth, twenty-first, and twenty-seventh. In the Red Hook Village Building, um, we collected and reviewed and signed easements from property owners within the Phase One Sewer Service Area. A total of hundred and thirty-five easements from a hundred and twenty-seven property owners must be collected and signed before the project goes out to bid. Property owners who have not submitted easements will be subject to proceedings to acquire easements through the authority of New York State and Red Hook Village laws. I think we have, what, about five, five or six easements outstanding? Um, I know Ed's been busy every day of the week trying to contact these people and Victoria and our engineers and we're trying to get them done so we can go out to bid. And again, property owners within the Phase One Sewer Service Area are welcome to attend working sessions held in the Red Hook Village Building on Fridays between ten A M. and two P M. Most of the times, we have the engineer, the attorney, Ed and myself are there. And we've, we've had quite a few people come forward, so it's, it's been good actually to answer their questions. Um, we also reviewed the outstanding documents that need to be completed prior to advertising and releasing bid documents for the construction of the Red Hook Sewer Project. We are almost complete with the USDA Rural Development Letter of Conditions. Um, the New York State D E C memo of September eleventh for the acquisition of a speedies permit for the expanded wastewater treatment plant discharge capacity that should be completed by the end of this week. And we also have another one from the E F C. A response to comments and additional requests regarding plan specifications and engineering reports. And we are trying to finalize the donation of the wastewater treatment plant and land donation agreement between the Red Hook Common Sewage Works Corporation and the Village of Red Hook. Um, the Village of Red Hook is considering to apply for the two thousand eighteen Duchess County Partnership for Manageable Growth Grant Program. A maximum of five hundred thousand dollars may be awarded for Phase Two of the Sewer Project. The Phase Two Service Area will include twenty-two properties from Red Hook Commons South to the Village Town Line. And the Red Hook Water Project Phase Three, um, which we're just kicking around at this point, but in, I think we made a decision or we, we had to wait till the next round, but we are considering applying for the New York State Environmental Facilities Corporation Water Infrastructure Improvement Act Grant Program. Um, and for water projects, we can request up to sixty percent of the project cost. On the task force side, both Charlie Lang and I sit on the, as representatives for the village, the intermunicipal task force. Um, we reviewed and discussed possible regulations on short-term residential rentals. And also reviewed updates on the Village of Red Hook Sewer Project, the Red Hook Town Extraction Committee, the local waterfront revitalization updates and revisions, and the Red Hook Town, the Red Hook Village Community Solar Project. So, we're always busy on Friday mornings. Um, several other committees that I sit on, uh, reports, there were no meetings held for the Town of Red Hook Zoning Review Committee, um, the Community Preservation Fund Advisory Board. There were no meetings, but the current balance of the Community Preservation Fund as of September thirtieth is one million one hundred and thirty-three thousand one hundred and eighty-eight dollars and fifty-two cents. So, it keeps consistently going up, which is a good thing. Um, the Sauk Hill Watershed Community, the monthly report, the Sauk Hill Watershed Community has completed River Keepers New York State Source Water Protection Scorecard. The scorecard assesses the drinking water protections already in place as a basis for recommendations to improve local water resource protection. And the Sauk Hill Watershed Community tour. And the Salk Hill Watershed Community toured the Bard College Water Lab on September nineteenth. The Northern Duchess Alliance, which I'm a member of, met on September twenty-first. We reviewed and revised a draft letter to New York State and the United States Representatives regarding the soaring cost of health care and their effects on local municipal government's ability to hire and make needed infrastructure improvements. We also discussed opportunities with Historic Red Hook to positively influence the trajectory of economic and social development in Northern Duchess County and to ensure that the uniqueness of communities are preserved and enhanced, as mentioned in the Northern Duchess Alliance's Blueprint for Economic Development. And we discussed working with and possibly using as a case study for community engagement, the organization, membership, and strategic goals of Red Hook Together. And this is a pretty heavy-duty committee, which I found out. This is the, the Town of Red Hook Local Waterfront Revitalization Program Working Group. And we meet once a month at the town hall. And we are currently reviewing the existing policies. And then we're, we're reviewing them for amendments. And, um, there's quite a few things, which I'm not going to read all. But, um, each member of the committee, made up of representatives from the Village of Red Hook, Tivoli, and the Town of Red Hook, and also Bard College, um, we're all working to get this thing forward. And that is it.
Maybe if I could just supplement Brent's report on, the front of his last papers there, he talked about Northern Duchess Alliance. They did join us at the most recent Red Hook Together meeting, which Brent and I used to go together, but his work schedule precludes that now. So just for an update and for the record, um, it was a good meeting. Karen Johnson from N D A was there and. Mary Johnson, rather. She, it was kind of interesting to see that they'd been looking for a group that would embody and like be like their, uh, posta, poster child for what they're looking to do with N D A. And it turns out Red Hook Together really fits that bill. It's, for those of you listening, it's, it's a composite, composite of village and town officials, school board, school administration folks, the libraries, Bard College.
Historic Red Hook.
Historic Red Hook, Chamber Commerce. It's sort of a sounding board. One of the reasons we founded it ten plus, about ten years ago, I think was the first meeting, was just to coordinate all the good things that are happening. So we're not stepping on each other's toes a lot. Even to this day, it's still hard to do, there's so much going on. But it also opens up a whole channel of communication on other things, which is great. And it really brings together folks, stakeholders from a lot of areas, and they can sit and talk around the room. One thing though, Brent, it was kind of funny. There was some effort to make the meetings more formal and more of an agenda and more like driven by motion and formality.
That'll push back.
I pushed back. It was, uh, like, to me, the ideal was sort of unique about them. We meet here sometimes, sometimes at the library, sometimes community center, sometimes at Bard. There's a certain synergy that it's just an energy. It's not so much a formal thing and it's, I like to keep it that way more. But, um, but N D A, they were really pleased with what they saw. And they'll be working with us a little bit more too. And then, let's see, one thing I started as Brent was reading, maybe for the board on his, um, Red Hook Phase Three. He, Brent and I were talking Friday and we had a thought, um, as you all may recall, I think it was two thousand and ten, we developed three-phase water improvement, water infrastructure improvement planning. It was, uh, Phase One we're done with, now Phase Two we're done with. Essentially now we have the three quadrants and the rest of the village that really just need water main replacement. We've done the well improvement, the storage capacity changes, the meter changes. But that Phase Three is still, when it was projected, it was like a, if you rounded, it's a five million dollar piece of work. We do think we have a little surplus in the water right now. We're still monitoring that. But I think we're looking at an idea instead of biting off the whole Phase Three. And what Brent was talking about with the WIA grant, the next cycle is really next September is the next deadline anyway for WIA grants. We're thinking, can we attack it by quadrant? Like we do certain things with catch basins and so forth. Um, so you could do one point two, one point two, one point two. That's three-sixths. It doesn't quite get you there. So it'd be like more like one point seven. And, um, instead of, because I do feel we've pushed the rate payer pretty hard to get Phase One and Two done. And then we have the sewer project going for those hundred and thirty-plus or minus property owners. So it's, um, give it a little breather. And I think we can see what surplus develops in the waterfront now. We haven't had a ton of breaks, knock on wood. But, um, in that other, those other three quadrants in my mind, Fisk and we'll call it Graves area, those are probably more priority, they're older neighborhoods. And when you get over the park, even aside, some houses tend to be newer. So we'll start to prioritize it, but, but we'll keep our options open there. And the other part, what was five million might have gone up, say, two percent a year for ten years. So it's probably another twenty. So it's could be another million dollars in cost if, if that cost was reviewed again. But we do have some engineers looking at, can we break that into some increments? Instead of Phase Three being one monster phase, doing three phases of Phase Three, so to speak. So we'll work with that a little more.
And in the original review by USDA, also for Phase Three, we have a five hundred thousand dollar grant available. So that will ease the burden hopefully a little bit if that's still available.
Yeah. So we'll keep leaning on the feds to keep those programs live. And then in the last part of his, when he talked about intermunicipal task force, um, short-term residential rentals, I thought we should just be clear, that's really a lot of us dealing with, I would call it Airbnb is like the mother of concept behind that as far as, um, we don't see too many here in the village. But, um, you know, the small municipalities, bigger ones, the state, everybody's looking at, you know, what regulation? I think from our perspective, it's probably more the safety side and the neighborhood protection side of things that we'd be concerned about. You know, it's, um, protecting the integrity of a neighborhood versus not. But right now, it's, it's a trend like Uber and Lyft. It's, it's out there in the world and it's, it's not going away. Well, thank you, Brent. I think we got through the committee reports going on to regular business. The first item there on our bullets is, I thought we could set a public hearing, that fellow that came in with the stop sign slash yield sign issue. We could talk about it more in workshop, but like we said to him, we just, it's not a matter of just going out and put up a different sign. We have to do certain, certain things. So the public hearing would be, um, if we, um, talk about it in workshop and then do some specifics. You know, we could decide what our inclination is, listen to more public input and then move forward. Cindy did mention that in November, Veterans Day is the Monday of our normal meeting, so we're.
And that's even late.
Yeah, so.
Looking at the nineteenth.
Is the nineteenth, is that the date?
Which is the week of Thanksgiving.
Yeah. So when do we do? I'd rather not move it up. I'd rather go back a month, nineteenth at seven p.m. I'll move that we set a public hearing for nineteen November, seven p.m. to review stop sign, local law modifications at Emerson Kent and Red Hook Estates.
Second.
One favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Your board meeting is actually after the workshop. Because the workshop is the ninth, is the fifteenth.
Wow. It's interesting. But we'll see about that workshop maybe. Next item is local law zoning changes. So in our packets, we have a few things. Maybe we could have Mr. Trapp fire up his, uh, vocal cords down there for a minute, but let's talk in general. First, we have the local law itself. We have a resolution to adopt it. And it also includes wording to deal with E A F and the seeker aspect, Jay, in, um, in that resolution. And we also have seeker part two, which we believe would be a neg deck in this case. It's a, it's a zoning law change. And like I said earlier, the county has come in that it's a matter of local concern. But I suppose, just as we're all together, um, council reviewed and prepared the seeker negative declaration that's in your packets. It's, um, designated a type one. I thought we would just, by consensus, take a page through it. Jenny, I don't know if you want to babysit the process, but they designated a type one. And, uh, it's a conditioned negative deck. And the wording, the proposed local law amends the village zoning law to modify certain provisions regarding motor vehicle service station and to amend the existing regulations regarding the use, maintenance, expansion, and discontinuance of non-conforming uses and structures within the village. Probably looks like there should be a plural in that second line. I just read service stations right there. The adoption of the local law will have a positive impact on community character. Motor vehicle service stations are not consistent with the goals set forth in the pattern book and architectural guidelines adopted as part of the village's comprehensive plan. The curb cuts necessary for the use increase vehicular and pedestrian conflicts by regulating the installation expansion of such uses, the law will promote walkability and encourage the development and redevelopment of parcels within the general business district with storefronts and restaurants. The amendments to the non-conforming use provisions are intended to clarify the provisions relating to non-conforming uses and structures. The adoption of local law will have a positive impact on historic resources. The village contains five structures that have been listed on the state and national registers of historic places. And two properties are eligible for listing, including the village diner, parentheses, halfway diner, the Elmendorf Inn, St. Paul's Evangelical Lutheran Church, and the Red Hook Public Library. Motor vehicle service stations are incompatible with the listed historic sites and consistent with the historical context of the village. The village has examined all other potential environment, environmental impacts and found no evidence of any potential significant impact, including without limitation, potential impacts on water quality, air quality, agriculture, energy consumption, or traffic patterns. So that last paragraph is about, by passing this law, we're not going to negatively impact those things. Then, Mr. Jay, the form itself.
Shall I start at the whereas's?
Well, I thought, could you, could we look at E F part two there? Just, um, impact on land. We're saying there's no, uh, proposed action. I just want to make sure we have a consensus on the boxes that are checked. Do you have that in front of you, Jay, or should we give it to you?
Sure. We're looking at the part two.
Yeah. Page one of ten.
One of ten, yes.
So we're saying no impact on land.
No geologicals. Okay. No impacts on the water.
Surface water or groundwater.
Oh, impact on groundwater, no. Impact on flooding, no. Impacts on air, no. Number seven, impact on plants and animals. No impact on agricultural resources, no. Impact on aesthetic resources, no. Impact on historical and archaeological resources, yes. To proximity to the, the listed items previously. Impact on open space and recreation, no. Impact on C E A critical environmental areas, no. Impact on transportation, no. Impact on energy, no. Impact on noise, odor, light, no. Impact on human health, no. Consistency with community plans.
Isn't, is not consistent. So it's, the proposed action is not consistent with adopted? So you answered negative to the not, right?
It's not consistent. No. Okay. No consistency with community character.
Same thing. So it is consistent. It's kind of a.
Right. It says the project is inconsistent with the existing.
It's not inconsistent.
So the project is consistent.
Right, yeah.
They're just trying to throw me off.
I know. It's when you look at those, like, what?
So then that leads to the neg deck.
Yeah, so you want to read that resolution, Mr. Jay?
I will be happy to. So back to my previous question, should I start at the whereas's then?
Oh, yeah, why don't you? It looks relatively short, if you don't mind.
Resolution number? Twenty-five?
Twenty-five, okay. Resolution to adopt a local law related to motor vehicle service stations. Whereas, a proposed form of a local law entitled a local law related to motor vehicle service stations, parenthetic, the proposed local law, was presented to the village board of trustees of the Village of Red Hook, over, uh, parenthetic, the board on September twenty, two thousand and eighteen. And whereas, the proposed local law would modify certain provisions of the zoning law regarding motor vehicle service stations and non-conforming uses and structures, and has been designed to protect the health, safety, and welfare of the community. And whereas, the proposed local law is consistent with the village's comprehensive plan. And whereas, a full environmental assessment form, parenthetic, E A F dated September twenty, two thousand and eighteen, has been prepared on behalf of the board. And whereas, September twenty, two thousand and eighteen, the board classified the proposed local law as a type-one action under the State Environmental Quality Review Act, SEACRA, and determined that it was only, that it was the only involved agency. Whereas, the board has reviewed the E A F and information obtained through its, its own knowledge, the public hearing, its consultants, and other agencies, and has sufficient information on which to base a determination of significance. And whereas, the board has considered the criteria contained in six N Y C R R six seventeen point seven and thoroughly analyzed all identified relevant areas of environmental concern. Whereas pursuant to two, section two thirty-nine M of the general municipal law, the proposed law was referred to the Department of Planning and Development, which responded on October fifteen, two thousand and eighteen, that it was a matter of local concern. Whereas, a duly notified public hearing was held on October fifteen, two thousand and eighteen, during which all those who wished to speak were heard. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the board as follows. Number one, the board hereby adopts the attached notice of declaration, of negative declaration, finding that the adoption of the proposed local law will not result in any significant adverse environmental impacts and that a draft environmental impact statement will not be prepared. The board here, number two, the board hereby adopts the proposed local law as local law number?
Four.
Four. Of two thousand and eighteen, parenthetic, the local law, that the village clerk be and she hereby is directed to enter said local law in the minutes of this meeting and in the village code of the Village of Red Hook to give due notice of the adoption of said local law to the Secretary of State of New York and take all other actions as may be required by law. Number four, the village clerk be and she hereby is directed to file notice of the negative declaration with the environmental notice bulletin. The questions of the adoption of the foregoing resolution will duly be put to a vote on roll call, which resulted as follows. Back to you.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
So I would ask that we put on the floor for, for a motion that we adopt the resolution twenty-five with the related local law number four. I'd ask for a second so we could have a little discussion.
Second?
As far as discussion, we did have a public hearing. We heard two comments against it from the audience. But as we've indicated, um, we don't feel that this is anti-business in any shape or form. It's more to protect the business that we have out there. We are developing this core of restaurant and retail, kind of unique retail. And these uses are just not consistent with the pattern book or the pedestrian walking and so forth that we need to make that more successful out there. While we do take your comments seriously, um, I would think that the work we've done in the pattern book and other folks and the aspirations groups we've talked to over the, probably six, the last six years, the overall perception is that it's not a good thing to have in the core of your village active, working automotive service stations that are expanding. This does not kill them, does not drop them out of business, does not shut them down. It's just, it governs how they can maintain themselves, but they can't really go expanding. And the two that are in the general business district are, you know, one is really busy. I don't know the business of the other one, but this, I don't think is anywhere going to hurt their daily, weekly, monthly operations. This is, this is a bigger picture situation. this is a bigger picture situation. That'd be my discussion. If anybody else has anything on that.
I think the zoning review committee reviewed all options too, and looked at it thoroughly and examined the existing character of the Village of Red Hook and, you know, try to make whatever we do consistent with the comprehensive plan and the language in the pattern book, which is adopted into the comp plan. So that being said, I think we took what actions were necessary.
Anybody else? So it looks like resolution twenty-five will affirm the neg deck that we reviewed, and it will create a law to be titled Local Law Number Four, which will be a local law relating to motor vehicle service stations, and it in and of itself has been read and discussed by the board, like Brent said. I guess for the past 10 months we've been working on it, right, as far as, um, so there's a motion to adopt the resolution. It's been seconded. Seems like discussion is done. I'll call for a vote. I would vote aye, yes. Ms. Norris, how do you vote? Mr. Kowalczek?
Aye.
Aye. And Mr. Trapp?
Aye.
Thank you. And Mr. Lang is absent. Do you have that man clerk? Let's see, local law. In a quasi-related thing, the next item is ZRC. That's that zoning review committee we've tasked a few board members and a member of the planning board to look at, make changes within our zoning. The next things that have come to the forefront look to be the East Market Street area. That's the highway business district. And then, essentially, right now, East Market has that odd tag. It's mainly, if you look down East Market, it's mainly residential. We, that character works pretty well right now, and I don't think there's any real pressure to change it, but it's certainly not a highway business district in many ways. And, uh, but we'd ask that ZRC look at what would be good options down there. You know, do we roll a mixed use into there? Do we keep it as it is? Do, you know, there's no predicted fixed outcome, but, and I think the two board members that are on that and then third board member, we're asking is just, this board would vote to authorize them to start meeting and researching at their own. There's no hot drop deadline on it, but, um, we would like them to consider doing that again. I think they're, got that expertise. And so I think just we need a simple motion that we'll continue that same ZRC with Trapp, Kowalczek, and Towel to continue to meet and make recommendations to the board on the current highway business district on that one side. And then, um, there's a second part of it there that's a little obtuse casualty damage to non-conforming uses. We'd like the board to consider what we would do if a non-conforming use is more than 50% damaged, where it has to rebuild or not. You know, what would, what would we like to see? What would, what would work there? But again, there's no, I think it's up to the pattern book, the board, and folks to look at what we do. So I'd offer it in terms of motion that the ZRC be re-tasked, if that's a word, with looking at highway business district and casualties damage to non-conforming uses in the general business district. Is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? One favor?
Aye.
Aye, thanks. I put materials management, new plant and recycling. I think we hit it all when Jen was up at the bat. We don't have to do more on that. Fire company meeting, Jay talked about it a bit. And I made some notes, which I circulated. Just, I kind of acted like as person at the meeting, as well as conveying the impact or the input to the rest of the board, just while it was fresh in my mind. I circulated that out. Let me just look for one of my notes here. Like Jay said, it was a good meeting. It was, we met over at the firehouse with one of their board, actually, two of their board members, and they ran through some things that are on their mind. One or two that stuck out. They, we're looking at that well that's at the corner of, I guess, the south, southwest corner, and really close to their building. And they are looking at maybe changing from fuel oil to heat the building. They're talking about geothermal and/or propane. So I did, by coincidence, write to the town, because there's also fire contract talks are coming up with the town of Red Hook, and then effective 12/31, their contract lapses. And the fire company has taken our initiative and incentive. They do concur, and we're going to do joint meetings now for contract talks. Part of it is, I was trying to set up a meeting date with the town and the fire company folks. I mentioned the geothermal, and the town is putting together some RFP and some, looking at grants for geothermal options. I don't think we have that option at our building. I don't know if we have enough room to drill enough tubes, but, uh...
It takes better room for the weld.
Yeah, but, um, so I told the town guys, hey, let's look at it in conjunction to help, because it'd be good to get the fuel oil out of the firehouse for one reason, and then B, be less, well, not less costly, but it'd be a greener solution to, a long-term solution. But, um, but in essence, we did agree, we'll do joint contract talk, because ours comes up, believe it or not, May 31, 19, so it's not that far away.
How much energy are they producing with those PV panels? Enough to go electric or instead of fuel?
You mean for powering the pump, the well pump?
No, it's, it's serving the fire company, the firehouse, so they're looking at alternative fuels, right, besides fuel oil.
Oh, you mean to make electric heat?
Yeah.
Oh, man.
I know that's an expensive source, but if they got...
It's a large system. They have their...
They're generating enough. I mean, rather than going back in, they grid it, they could use it themselves.
Bring that up when we meet in the next, so...
I think it would be good to just, at least to understand, you know, how much production and what sort of offset occurs there.
Yeah. So I did meet with one of their members during the week. They have a new board. Um, I don't know if I can give you all the names, but the one new board member I met, and they're, I gave him some demographic information, where they're trying to get some grants for turnout gear and things like that, which is good. So they're also getting demographics from the town of Red Hook, since they service both. We talked about well decommission, the gear is the grant, and then the contract we talked about. But like Jay said, overall, it was good. We sat and got things out and...
It, it had been tense in the past, and it didn't seem to be as such this time, which made it a good bit easier for us to have more substantive discussions. I mean, I think...
Yeah, no, good, yeah. And then a lighter thing, just in my mail I had from the Red Hook Rotary Foundation. It's an annual citizen of the year award. It's October 2, 3, as I recall, yep, 23rd, Firehouse Community Room. That's what made me think about it. Six fifteen, social time, dinner at seven. I usually go to represent the village, and then whoever else wants to come, we can cut your fee, get you there. It's, uh, tickets are 45 bucks a person. $20 donation to the foundation for Rotary. But if anybody wants to check.
What date is that?
Two, three, Tuesday, 23rd, 7:00 PM.
It's next week, right?
Pardon me? Yeah. All right, let's see. What I had, and we circulate, is the next item, sexual harassment policy. Like, you know, each year, we've run an annual in-house training, update seminar for staff, whether it be full-time, part-time, elected, casually affiliated with the village's committees, planning boards. Everybody's welcome and offered. We give a free lunch and training session. And what we're doing was complying with bigger, more federal and different pieces of harassment, sexual workplace safety rules. Even though we don't have more than 50 folks, we felt it was worthwhile to do that. But in the past three or four weeks, we realized that New York State has taken it to a formal level where here in October, we have to have in place sexual harassment policy. And we have had one since the year 2010, but state has mandated one that complies and uses their wording. So we had council draw up, and it's been circulated to all of you. Essentially, they took the template with the state requirements and plugged in the wording for the Village of Red Hook whenever there was a blank. So what it really involves is Cindy has copied it, and we put a letterhead, kind of a cover page on it. We've circulated it out already. We, I just want to update from our old 2010 version to replace that with the current one that's due to be done by here October and 2018. What we have to do, we develop the new complaint form that's attached that meets the state guidelines, and then we'd also have to do the annual training. They wanted them before 12/31. I think we go with them more in the springtime, if I remember right, but we'll have to, one in before 12/31. So we'll do the same thing, I think, do a lunch, and we get everybody in. Cindy did develop a spreadsheet, so we can show we gave every person their version, and, but I would, uh, let's see. What council told us, "All employers in New York must adopt sexual harassment prevention policy that meets the statutory requirements set forth in New York Labor Law 201G. The policy must also make it clear that the policy applies to independent contractors, vendors, consultants, and non-employees that provide services to the employer." So what we did, that template that we cycled around would be what we'll be using, and if you have it there, it's pretty straightforward. It's just codified what, what we expect from our people. And quite frankly, it's what we've been expecting and working on for the past 10 years. Anyway, it just made it a little more consistent with what the state wants it to say. So I would move that we adopt, in motion form, it's not a local law change or anything, it's just internal policy procedures for personnel. The, the law, the body of wording that's been circulated to make us consistent with New York Labor Law 201G and the wording and complaint wording that we have to have there. So, and it will also comply with having interactive annual training before December, I guess it's before January 1, 2019, so it's one more day than December 31. Is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? One favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Is this, do we have to pass this resolution, number 24?
Um, yeah, I guess I paraphrase it. Do you have it right in front of you, Brent?
You made the motion, Jay seconded.
All right, let's see. I have here, um, resolution, court grant approval. I don't know if I have it or Cindy, did you keep it? What do we have? I have it. Let's see. Each year, the court gets an audit done, which is a requirement of the Office of Court Administration. Did the board get this letter? It's, it's a, it's by CPA Laurie Doty, dear village mayor and trustees. Does that sound familiar? "In planning and performing my audit of the Village Justice Courts, the Village of Red Hook for the year ended December 31, 2017." Does that sound familiar? I could keep reading. "In accordance with the auditing standards generally accepted in the United States of America, I consider their internal controls..." This, she's talking about the court and the way they move money and do their accounts and so forth. "I consider their internal controls over financial reporting as a basis for designing my audit procedures, but not for the purpose of expressing an opinion on the effectiveness of internal controls. My consideration of internal control was for a limited purpose described in the preceding paragraph, and was not designed to identify all deficiencies in internal control that might be significant. A deficiency in internal control exists when the design or operation of a control does not allow management or employees in the normal course of performing their assigned function to prevent or detect and correct mistakes and misstatements on a timely basis. In auditing cash deposits for Judge Trebusser and Justice Martin noted that all deposits were made in a timely manner, and all monthly reports were submitted by the 10th of the subsequent month as required by the New York State Controller's Office." And essentially, that looks like the only thing, only thing she's auditing, and that looks like what the Office of Court Administration requires. I might, do we have a deadline on this?
Might be.
If we did it Thursday?
Oh, you're okay Thursday.
It seems like people are kind of hunting for it, so I think I'd rather wait till Thursday for that.
Do we have a assistant court clerk? Might want to revise the letterhead. Still shows Betsy Levy.
What's that dated?
What do you have there?
October 1, 2018.
What, what do you, uh, can you... Well, from Trebusser, it does.
No.
Yeah, that's me. Village of Red, Justice Court.
That's the grant.
Yeah, but that's what he's looking at, I think. All right, let's see. We'll defer that to Thursday night. LED streetlight update. You all might recall, we did the, um, we have the contract with NIPA moving forward, and we have their design team starting to work on it, which is all pretty exciting, because I've been noticing some of the vouchers, it seems like Central Hudson must have raised, it seemed like the last voucher was 5,200 bucks for a month of street lighting, which times 12 is what, 60,000-ish? I think we budgeted 53 or 55, so there must have been some rate change.
It'd have to make up for the, for the lower energy usage.
But, um, but that is moving ahead. For some reason, the design team from NIPA wanted two years again of our invoices with Central Hudson, but doesn't make any sense to me, because it's essentially the same bill every month. It's like, it's very little of it's driven by energy. It's more the rental, the heads, and the bolt, the light. It's like, so I've been pushing back on the guy, and nothing changes. We don't add streetlights, we don't delete them. It's, uh, but it is moving forward, and the town's in on it too. It's, uh, so I think that's going to be pretty cool when that comes.
Is Tively also on that? Is it all three of us, or? I mean, it's a bigger consortium, I know.
Yeah, there's more. I think there's 18 in it, but I forget. Tively must be, but I haven't really heard them say. A little different thing, I put an extra note to myself. We have, in the past, we moved to sell the old big international, what was it, 1996 super plow, Dan's old major plow, you know? It's a 1996 International 4,800 plow truck with plow and sander. As part of the purchase of the new plow last late winter, I guess, we moved to, that would be pushed into surplus, and then sold through the county auction system. And then, that's happening, we held off, and we're timing it out more to this time of year, when like big parking lot plow guy is, or somebody might be looking for a truck just before the winter. That's on the market. Then the old, I call it the Popeye mobile, it was a 2003 Ford Crown Vic. It was the unmarked brown car that, you know, no power steering left and different thing. That's being put on the market. Then you might remember the little shed back here that we used to put signs and cones in, with, when we got the new snow blower and different things, the highway department needed a little more room that, we didn't really want them storing that snow blower in our hall like they were doing for a little bit of time there. And the other one was too small, so we got a new one, and we want to move that through surplus. So I just want to make a motion, just to, the, the big truck was already planned and affirmed, and I believe we declared the Ford Crown Vic surplus. The shed, we didn't work on, but I wanted to put them together and just, so they're, they're on auction right now. But, um, so I'd just like, for formality, for the village to declare surplus and move through absolute auction. That's the county shared services auction that we've had good results with. We'd like to declare surplus and put on that forum, the 2003 Ford Crown Vic, unmarked police car, the 1996 International 4,800 plow and plow truck with sander, and the four-by-six wooden shed. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Any discussion? One favor?
Aye.
Aye, thanks. Now, I did have some executive session, but we could, um, I think we hit all the business. We would entertain comment from our-
The incident report, sir.
Yep.
They keep going up and up and up. What's the story? You know, you can write anything down on that. How's it documented?
Police-wise, let's see.
Incident report.
Yeah, let me, um, hold on a minute, Don. I'll find it. Do you remember the number? Was it 350 or 390? Here it is. Let's see, 352.
352.
Yeah.
354, last month.
Hmm.
352, monthly for that was 335.
Yeah, I don't, it seems to me it's dancing around. That number, 352 is a little higher than, um, I think what they're doing is we have-
I just can't see that many incidents.
Hmm. Yeah, well, it's-
We get a list every month of all those, oh.
Yeah, well, it's attached and, um-
We never had this coincidence, you know, all of a sudden.
Listen, I mean-
So, Ed, how many cars pass through that light on a daily basis?
14,000.
14,000.
Yeah, and Don, I mean, looking at it, it ranges from leaving scene with accident. It's called, a program called Police Pro. It's where they, um, when they get a call and they go out on something, they take, from their computers, log it in.
Calls are documented.
Pardon me?
Calls are documented.
Yeah, no, no, this is not just phone calls. This is their calls, their work on the field, drug takebacks. Like if they take back, um, what do we got here? Looks like about 15. They have a drug takeback system where people come in and they meet them.
These numbers seem to be pretty out of sight. I just can't believe in this area that there's that much when you don't see them hardly around.
Looking at, Don, let's just go through a few. Equipment correction is four. Those would probably be tickets written, you know? Fingerprinting, two. Foot patrol, three. Harassment aggravated, one. Harassment physical, one. Illegal dumping, one. Lockouts, looks like seven or eight of them. They're good at keeping records. Medical emergencies, mental health, missing persons.
Well, lockouts, that's easy enough. You can put anything down on that.
Well, it's only seven or one, two, eight of them.
If you look at just the, uh, the traffic tickets, it's about 1% of the cars that pass through the light up there.
Yeah. Special details. That was like harsh travel day. We put some extra guys on. Suspicious persons. Any one of them would be hard to say they shouldn't do this, to be honest with you. You know, it's, um, animal complaints, assist motorist. Uh, then it goes to the town. The big thing is one driver, Don, is, um, the town has given more money in the contract years consistently the past three or four years or so. So, there is more town patrol, more, more activity out with our guys in the town. So, that would drive up, you, I think you would normally see-
You get those numbers up with the, you get numbers there, pull it in the box.
The computer.
Yeah, yeah, it's, yeah, it comes off the program.
Well, and a, a ticket is a double count. If you're counting any, any time you give a ticket out, is a, is an incident report. I mean, you should subtract that number from the tickets. Get a real number.
Yeah, I don't know. Um, like I said, when I did the report, there were 352 incidents resulted in 149 tickets. So, I assume it's an incident resulting in a ticket. Some ticket, not all incidents-
It's called double counting. It's, you know-
No, 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 no. Not all incidents. I'm saying the opposite. We're not adding 149 to 352. It's 352 resulted in a ticket. Not every pullover results in a ticket.
Well, did they count that as an incident? I mean, talk to somebody.
Yeah, they would if they pulled somebody over for something.
Say hello.
It'd be an incident. No, shouldn't do that. Domestic disputes. And they do give generic addresses where things happen. So, anyway, what else you got?
I had a question and back to that, uh, zoning issue with repair shops and such. Now, the village is mandating that, uh, unrelated automotive businesses have charging stations, fueling stations. Is that a violation of zoning, of the village zoning or the, uh, uh, the plan?
Could you restate? We don't mandate-
Well, gas stations, you, you, you took away the repair shop. You consider a gas place that dismet, dispenses fuel and you combine it with, or repairs, either both or either one. It's automotive, automotive. Now, you're mandating you put these charging stations in parking lots of, of our municipal parking lot, of a CVS. I think you're putting it in probably over by the, uh, storage place. They're not automotive. And now you're putting fueling stations in these places.
You mean the electric-
Is that a violation of your own, uh, plan, the village plan, whatever?
So, that's the interpretation you would make if it came in front of you in the zoning board?
I would have to look at it because I don't like the idea of combining repair and gas.
And you had to legally back it up with the zoning regulations?
Fueling, automotive.
I don't think you could make that argument.
Which, before even, I'm not sure I'm following your question. Are you saying we're competing with the gas station or am I following the question?
No, I, I, you, you seem to be opposed to fueling vehicles, but yet you're mandating it in places that are not even automotive related that have fueling, to be fueling vehicles.
Hmm, I'm not following-
Gas, propane, uh, nitrogen. I mean, you're gonna be putting them in all these other places, mandating it for places that are not automotive related at all. They don't repair them. Now, you're putting them all over the place.
Well, our code-
I'm wondering if it violates your own, uh, you know, master plan.
Well, it's two different parts of the code. The EV's charging stations are required, as I recall, on parking lots greater than 44 spaces. So, that triggers CVS, us, and-
Right, but that was a village decision, not the state or nothing like that. That was the thing you decided to do.
That's one part of our zoning code. So, the new thing we just passed says automotive service stations cannot expand any more than they are right now. So-
Yeah, but you're saying automotive service stations, the stations now, most of them are just going to pumping gas. And then you got a couple of repair shops that are independent of, they don't pump gas. It's, it used to be a combination, but that, that time has come and gone. There, there are fewer of them around. I think there's one or two in the village. That's it. That do the combination.
Well, the thing is too, in the general business district, we're talking too. So, you know, the different zones. I, I don't see them as the same way you do. I think you plug in your EV, that's not automotive service. That's, you know, it's-
Pumps, it's electric, it's, it's taking up space, it's creating traffic coming in like you're talking about crossing the sidewalk. It's un, and it's unrelated to the original business that's there.
It's in a parking lot. We're talking buildings. Anyway, appreciate you coming. Anything from the board in the general business that we haven't touched on? I thought if we're so inclined, let's see. Um, we could move into executive session. We shouldn't be too long. Um, those that want to wait, just consider to wait. Panda you can turn off. We'll leave the room for a minute. But I'd like to go into discuss, uh, employment matters regarding the employment of a particular person in executive sessions. Is there a second?
Second.
So, we'll go in. It looks like 8:43-ish. One favor?
Aye.
We'll be back.